Okay, it is now 7:00 PM on Thursday, September 20th, and I call this meeting of the Bellevue Planning Commission to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Perrin.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
Smith. Baumgartner. Jacobson.
Here.
Ackley.
Here.
Casey.
Here.
Ritz.
Here.
Thank you.
This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act, a copy of which can be found in the hallway of the hearing room. At this time, I would ask everybody in the room and all commissioners and audience members to please silence and turn off their cell phones or any other electronic devices that could disrupt our proceedings. Also, if you would, please note the emergency exit to the rear of the room and to the right, our right, your left, is also the severe weather evacuation. We'll go out and around the corner. And the severe weather rooms are the restrooms for this evening. If we have severe weather this evening, that's where we'll evacuate to. If you have a health problem or another issue, please let me know and staff will call 911. Fire extinguishers are located in the hallway behind you as well as the AED. And restrooms, of course, are around to the your left as well. In the event of severe weather, we know what our designated shelter is and let's hope that we don't run into that. Our next item on the agenda is approval of our minutes of our August 23rd, 2018, regular meeting. I entertain a motion to revise or approve the planning commissioner meeting minutes of the August 23rd regular meeting. Motion to approve was written. Motion by Commissioner Ackley.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Kane.
Please vote.
Has everybody voted?
All in favor, motion carried.
Great, thank you. Our next item on the agenda is to accept into record all staff reports, attachments, memos, and handouts regarding each application. Staff, any updates or additions since the packet was mailed last week?
No, there are not.
Great, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to accept all reports, attachments, and memos, handouts.
I move to accept all reports, handouts.
Thank you. Commissioner Kane, motion?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Casey. Commissioners, if you would, please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Our next item, do you be clear, is the consent agenda. We have no items on our consent agenda, therefore we'll move on to our public hearings. We have three public hearing items this evening. I will announce each case and then ask if there are any updates from the planning department. After that, the applicant will have the opportunity to present their request. After the applicant has been heard, the public will be allowed to provide any testimony they would like considered in the record. Those testifying should come forward to the podium, sign, state your name, address, and sign in for the record, please. Testimony should be limited to five minutes and I reserve the right to shorten that time if we have a large number of people coming forward to testify. I will then close the public hearing and invite the commissioners to make their wishes known. That may include requests for clarifications, other discussions points, as well as making a motion to either approve or disapprove the agenda item, which will be followed by a vote, a motion and a vote. Between the motion and vote, I will make any clarifying statements that we need to among the commissioners to make sure we understand only the motion itself and not change the discussion. Our first item on the agenda for general public is a request to rezone Tax Lot 1, accepted right of way located in the northeast quarter section of 7, T-13N, R-13E of the 6th Primarity in Sarpy County, Nebraska, from AG to BN for the purpose of a business office. The applicant is Mr. Rakini. The location is approximately 4803 Cape Heart Road. The case number is DZ-1808-4. Staff, any updates on this item?
No, there are not.
Great, thank you. Okay, I will open it up for public hearing. Mr. Rakini, would you like to come forward and make any statements? And as you are signing in, I will apologize if I have mispronounced your name.
No, you got it. Rakini is the way you pronounce it.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, and I want to first thank all of the ladies and gentlemen of the commission for the public service that you provide for the city of Bellevue as volunteer servants to help do what's best in the public's benefit. So, we have applied for the application to rezone the lot that was previously mentioned by Leland. As a 13-year State Farm agent in this town, I've been a good neighbor and I've done what I think has helped to protect the people of this community against the unexpected. As a business owner who's still relatively young, I plan on working many more years in a professional services capacity, providing risk management, financial services to my customers. I'd like to own a building. I'd like to make Bellevue my home. And that's why I'm applying for the rezoning request. I think the rezoning of this would be mutually beneficial, both for the current landowners, for myself, and for this community. I feel that way because as the plans to build behind it and to its west with a housing development, I think it's going to make this place stick out like a sore thumb. I don't believe it'll provide a lot of attractive opportunities for other people to buy it as a residence because Cape Heart Road is awfully busy. If you go out there and stand on a weeknight, you will hear lots of traffic, you will see lots of traffic, and you will most likely be delayed trying to get out. So, my office uses the phone, we use the internet, we use text messages, we do a lot of things by computer. My employee and I, we make house calls. We take insurance and financial services to a different level. We are not a retail establishment. I think rezoning this or making some sort of way that my office can operate from this location would be good because we're not a fast food restaurant. We're not going to be attracting lots of people, lots of cars, lots of teenagers who might be making lots of noise. We're not a retail establishment. We're not going to have people coming to buy shoes or buy goods and services. We have no anticipation of becoming a daycare where people will be dropping off their children. My employee and I will get there, usually between 7:30 and 8:00 in the morning. We conduct business. And we'll usually leave about 6:00, 6:30 in the evening. So, I appreciate the planning department's work on putting the recommendation together. I don't necessarily agree with all of their points after I've had conversation with the director, Chris Schuchack, in finding out that I believe there is a point in here that says that it is safe to assume at some point in the future that improvements will need made to 48th Street, which will limit the full access of this property. And that it sounds like 48th Street would be eliminated and then the access road from behind would have to be used. The conversation that I had with Chris was trying to clarify that is, is that five years from now, 10 years from now, 15 years from now? And he said to me, quote, "Matt, it may never happen." And I don't think that should be a deciding factor on why this is approved or not approved. I think the building as it stands will be the building that I use. It's just what goes on inside of it that will be different. So, it's not going to look like a commercial building. It'll be a residence, and I'll use it for my insurance, financial services, professional services. So, I would hope that you take the time to consider the perspective that that lot, when a housing development is put behind it, may not necessarily blend in. It may not provide continuity to the neighborhood. But I do believe as well that Cape Heart Road and its development, the paving of it by the county was with the expectation of increased traffic. And I think what would be good for Bellevue is you're reconsidering its use, not just as residential dwellings. I believe a community that has a variety of integrated zonings will benefit both the business, the government, and the residents of this community. So, I thank you for your consideration of my perspective. I'd ask you to take it under consideration. And again, I thank you for your time as volunteers. Any questions you have for me?
Great, thank you. Not at this time. After we close the public discussion, we may ask you to come up and make a few clarifications. At this time, is there anybody else in the audience that would like to step up and testify either in favor or against? If you would, sign in, state your name. Just as a point of order, are one or both of you going to speak?
Probably both.
Probably both.
If I could, just one at a time at the podium, if you're comfortable with that?
Oh, sure.
Great, thank you.
All right. My name is Kevin Mills, and we, my wife and I are the property owners at 48th and Cape Heart Road. And we made this deal with Matt. We thought it would be a good deal for us and a good deal for him because we're planning on retiring next year and we're planning on moving out to the lake. And so, we want to get rid of this property. And my question is, I guess Matt says he's going to be there probably 20 years. He's planning on retiring also. And I talked to the city and the county, and the answers I get that nothing's probably going to happen anyhow for 15 or 20 years. So, my question, I guess, would be, why are they denying that if it's not going to happen until then anyhow? And why can't it go back to residential if they're going to let it do that? You know, I don't see where the big hangup would be with that. But I guess that's all I got to say because I don't know how we're going to sell it as a residential. When I called the county and asked them what their plan was for our driveway and stuff, and they said, "Well, we don't know." And how can I sell my property to somebody and say, "Well, you're going to have a major change down the road 15, 20 years, but I don't know what it is." Now, not too many people are going to want to buy a property like that. I wouldn't, but so, I guess that's all I got to say, but...
Okay. Appreciate it, thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to come forward? Great, thank you.
I'm Cheryl Mills. I'm the other property owner. And, well, I guess my first issue, not issue, but when we met with the builder who is going to build around us, he came to our house, showed us the plan, showed us all the lots. Nothing was ever said about closing off 48th Street, closing off the access on 48th Street, that possibly one day we would have to use an easement into our home. And I did talk to someone in your office, I think it was Tammy, and she explained to me that the builder probably didn't know about it at the time we spoke with him, that what he had at the time wasn't a finalized plot. She did send me a finalized plot that shows the proposed access, which is on the south side of the Outlet A, on the west side of our house. And if I understood her correctly, it sounded to me like that access would come then from the west along, if I understood what she said, the 20 feet would run right along our property line. But then, does it turn north to connect to our driveway? Does it come through our yard to do that? So, that's a concern. My husband mentioned too, one of my concerns was when we go to sell our house. I mean, our plan was to retire next year, to move, to sell the house. I think that could be a swaying part of a potential buyer's decision. Again, if we, you know, I feel like if we sold to a residential person, we need to disclose to them that there's something coming in the future. We don't know when. If it will be when the traffic warrants it, I find it hard to believe that that'll be 15 or 20 years. I think it'll be way sooner than that, based on what we're seeing now. I sit in my driveway right now in the morning waiting to get out onto 48th Street because of the traffic. So, I don't believe it's going to be 10 to 15 years. I think it's going to be sooner. Just my opinion. I mean, I just think it'll be sooner than that. And I think that's something we need to disclose to a potential buyer. So, again, that could be, it could be a good thing, could be a bad thing, I guess depending on how you look at it. But the whole thing has just caught us off guard. I mean, when we got the letter, that's the first we knew of any of it. So, obviously, you know, it kind of shook us and, you know, we weren't really prepared for this. So, but I think if Matt purchased it as a business, I think it's an ideal location for a business. It's not, won't be a huge traffic business like a supermarket or whatnot. I agree with what Matt said. I think it's going to stick out like a sore thumb as a residential. It's a much bigger lot than what the houses will be that'll be built around us with the outbuilding there. It's not going to fit in as a residential. And to me, I don't view Cape Heart Road as a residential road. I mean, when I think residential, I think driving through a neighborhood. That's not a neighborhood road. That's, to me, more like a highway. We've got semi trucks going down that road now. So, that's just kind of our concerns. And, I mean, I would really like to see Matt be able to buy it, both for his benefit and for ours. So, if you can take those under consideration, we'd appreciate it.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
At this time, is there anybody else that would like to come forward and speak either for or against this item? Seeing nobody coming forward, I will close the public hearing and we'll turn it over to the commissioners. Commissioners, what are your wishes?
I guess question for staff. Would you give maybe a little background on some of the discussions that were had? I know one of our concerns probably is with BN zoning. Again, even if we're not concerned about Mr. Rakini's use, the change of zone allows a future use, again, that may be something we don't want. And as I look at the BN zoning, again, you have things like restaurants that would be allowed on a limited basis, other kind of retail. And again, Mr. Rakini appreciating that's not what you're planning to do there. The issue we're faced with is once you do a rezoning, all of these uses are then allowed. So, if anybody comes forward in the future and you sell it to them, if it's zoned properly, they can go forward with that. So, I guess, Mr. Schuchack, I gave way too much lead in there, but can you maybe walk through what the discussions were, kind of the analysis you went through to come to the conclusion here?
Your description was very close to the conversation we had. It mostly centered around the driveway access and when and if that changes. As he noted, and with Tammy and I noted, we're not sure if or when that will happen, five, 10, 15, 20 years, forever. But I think probably at some time it will be, although with the limited future development south of, on 48th Street, beyond Clearwater Falls. Right now, that's not going through. It stops there at the end of Clearwater Falls in Cedar Grove. The rest of that area is in the Platte River Drainage District or sewer drainage area. So, it is going to be hard to sewer that area. So, I think you've got, you know, maybe another 80, 120 acres along 48th Street that will develop fairly soon. But from there, we don't know. The county, or as long as it's in the county, they will keep an eye on it. I think they've already done some traffic counts. They will look at improvements when they're necessary and warranted. Some of those things that they look at are traffic count, turning movements. They look at number of accidents as well. So, again, we don't know when that might, any improvements might happen. Based on the driveway design standards, that driveway is okay now based on there being a stop sign at that intersection. I'm looking at it. The driveway's approximately 130 feet south of Cape Heart Road pavement. And again, that is, meets the standards for a driveway location. If that drive, if that intersection becomes signalized and the, and 48th Street is classified as a collector's street, the required distance would be 175 feet, which still works on that lot. It would have to shift down toward the south end of the property, but approximately where Tammy's showing on there. But it would still be able to take access to 48th Street. If 48th Street is classified as a major street or an arterial, that requirement, I believe, is 230 feet separation from Cape Heart to the driveway. That does not work on this property. And at that point in time, we would be looking at the alternate access through the access easement off of Leewood Drive or 50th Street, the streets behind it, because it is on the south side of that Outlet A. And I did let Mr. Rakini know that in the event, and that was one of the questions, was that in the event that is needed, I would expect that either the city or the county would be responsible for putting that driveway in or him. They wouldn't just take the access away from 48th Street and not leave anything there for him. So, I think that would be part of the paving project for 48th Street, that the access easement would be paved for them. Again, we talked about all this. Mr. Rakini asked, you know, about the, you know, if that, if it never happens, is that our main objection to the rezoning? I told him, "No." We discussed the spot zoning and how we felt that it was spot zoning, and that's really our major objection to this zoning issue. It is the only commercial zoning, or it would be the only commercial zoning on the south side of Cape Heart Road. Both east and west of there have already been platted for residential purposes, directly east a lot for apartments. And as he said, the area to the west is single family. You can see on there, there is commercial property up at 36th and Cape Heart Road that can serve this area. That, the issue of commercial property or commercial zoning along this corridor was discussed when both Bell Lago and Falcon Point came through. Obviously, the council approved these two plats with the residential zoning. Another item we talked about, and I know Mr. Rakini mentioned that he wanted to be there for 20 years. I did tell him, you know, the zoning goes with the property. And although he says he may be there for 20 years, nobody knows what's going to happen. And, you know, even after 20 years or after two years, if something happens and he decides to sell, the zoning stays with the property. And it could be a number of things with the zoning there. A convenience store, some of the other things, a restaurant, other uses that Mr. Ackley mentioned earlier. So, we discussed all those things. And really, I'll say, our main reason for the denial is the lack of performance of the comp plan and the spot zoning issue.
Thank you. I guess, Mr. Rakini, is that, again, I'm not sure how much back and forth there was on the application or that background or understanding. But again, from the zoning perspective, that's always our concern, is once you plant the zoning, even though the applicant may have a use where you're thinking, boy, this is going to fit right in the neighborhood, your local insurance agent. The concern is what happens after you, based on, the zoning ordinance goes through items A through double O that are all allowed uses. So, rough math, there's damn near 45 other uses that could go in there. The other thought I had, and I guess, Mr. Schuchack, just for education purposes here, I know if it stayed a residential lot, you can have a home-based business. If that were still used as a residence by either Mr. Rakini or an employee, could that then be used as a home-based business with a special use permit or conditional use permit? I think we've done that with some daycares in the past.
We discussed that also. The home-based business is limited with, you have to have, somebody has to live there, obviously, and they're allowed one other employee on the premises. And Mr. Rakini and I talked about this too, and some of the criteria or the requirements for the home-based business. One of the things that I believe he may have a problem with, and I don't know this for fact, but he can, you know, he's aware of it, you cannot advertise your address. You cannot link the address with the, you know, the business and the address together in advertising or anything like that. So, I, like I said, I believe that that would probably cause a problem, Mr. Rakini. Certainly, we could, you know, go through all of the requirements, but those are the main ones that I thought he might have a problem with meeting the home-based business.
And the owner would actually have to live there or an employee of the owner?
Yes. The...
Owner or an employee of the owner? Again, the advertising, I think, would be...
I mean, I'm, probably the resident, I don't know the exact words, the probably resident and an employee. The resident and one employee are allowed there. So, I can say, it wouldn't have to be the owner of the property, but the resident and an employee are allowed.
Thank you. Commissioners, other comments? Commissioner Kane?
May I, Mr. Rakini, could you please come up to the microphone? I have a question for you. Is this the only property that you've considered? And why did you choose? I just still don't understand why you chose that particular location.
Well, I drive by it every day, so I'm aware of the traffic counts. And as a business, traffic count is a good thing. I live on a street where I can look out and I can see a bean field, and I don't hear cars driving up and down the road all the day long. So, I think as a residence, this is a terrible location. But I think for a business, it's a wonderful location. I picked this location for a couple, one that, the other. This lot actually has what I will call elevation to it.
Yes, it does.
The lot does have the potential of 260 or 70 rooftops. And in the business that I'm in, I protect rooftops. I pay for rooftops. And so, that is an ideal situation for me. And did I consider other locations? There's somewhat of a gentleman's agreement amongst State Farm agents, of which I'm one of six in Bellevue proper. And that is, you don't impede on another one of your peers' quote-unquote area of town. Now, we don't have restrictions on where we do business, but you all know the geographics of Bellevue. There's not a whole lot of places that I can look at buying without stepping on one of my peers' toes. So, I have, in the 13 years I've been an agent, always had my eye on the south and southwestern growth of Bellevue. I had previously been in front of the Menards at 20, about 21st and Cornhusker. I intentionally moved south to Cape Heart Road because I believe that's where the growth of Bellevue will be. And as an entrepreneur, I would like to make sure that I can capitalize on where the opportunity exists.
Well, one of my questions was, do you plan to reside there? But I think, unless you want to say something about that, but I thought, Mr....
To answer that question, no, I do not plan to, nor would I intend to.
Okay.
To be very honest, I want to work with the city. I want to maintain my own integrity. I'm not going to tell you I'll live there so I can run my business out of it. I won't live there.
And I did go out to view the property. And in seeing it, there is more than just the house as a building on that property. What would you do with the other buildings? Building, I can't remember.
Well, it's an awfully big storage closet.
Yes.
Some of my consideration and would be to consider it as part of the... Some of my consideration uh and uh would be to consider it as part of the parking. I've contemplated with talks with an architect, taking the two-car garage out. So that it is a building, not necessarily a building with a two-car garage. So that I could have. Parking and an easy access into the building. From the south, I've, I've had businesses where the access into the building is from the north. And everybody knows that's where the wind blows in this town from, so.
I also had another question for you, um you talked about continuity and fitting in. The property currently will have to have changes made to it as recommended in the report. What's your feeling about that?
I had every intention of bringing it up to uh the American Disability Act, uh so that there would be a ramp to get in. There would be a unisex uh handicap accessible bathroom. And I have every intention of investing in the property if I can secure it with some security of knowing that I'll be able to run my business there for. Fifteen to twenty years.
Now, surrounding construction currently has, is quite large. So how do you feel like, I, I don't see the compatibility there with what you're talking about. In the homes that are in the area, how do you feel about that?
I'm not sure I understand your question, Ms. King.
Well, the, the, let's take the home that's directly across, well, not directly across the street, it's down a little ways. It's a large property, I have no idea who owns the home, it's a lovely home, but if other constructions in that area are similar. How do you see your business fitting in residentially? It would be just like taking, um as Mr. Ackley said, this could be used after you leave. For anything else, if the zoning is changed, and just plopping um a movie theater there, that's a nice thing I could say, I don't think.
Well, there's only so much you can do with nine tenths of, of an acre, especially when you don't have access from Cape Heart Road. I look at the alternatives of, if I, if I don't buy it, um and you don't change the zoning on it. That's the same building that will be there, whether I own it or not. And whether that fits into the community and the continuity of what development is, is all because of what the city council has approved for. The developments around it. Frankly, I think it sticks out like a sore thumb when I see a bunch of houses that's backed to it. And um I think turning it into a small business operation that doesn't have a lot of traffic, doesn't have a lot, a lot of delivery trucks and doesn't have sneaky trash. Is a better alternative to, I don't know what would become of it. I really don't, I, I, you know, I, I think a, a realtor would probably tell Joe and Sherry. You're gonna have a tough time selling this place, because it's on a really busy street and it's zoned residential. And uh. It, 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 it's gonna have a whole bunch of houses behind it that they look out and you, you can see somebody's sliding. Sliding glass doors on their deck and into their kitchen, but it's not like you're a part of the neighborhood.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
One additional question for you. The um, we talked a little bit just now about uh the comment in there about bringing it to ADA compliance. Uh that includes parking, I noticed that the uh property, both on Cape Heart and Forty Eighth Street is uh, has a right-of-way for uh power lines. On each side of it, which um look like they're right up adjacent to the property on each corner, along, along the two highway, the road and the Forty Eighth Street and Cape Heart. ADA compliance requires additional parking, is, have you looked into additional parking, is, and could you go a little bit into the plans that you're thinking of to? To address when you say adding property, uh parking to get into compliance?
Well, I, I've, I've talked with an architect, friend of mine, and in looking at it, that's where some of the conversation came from about the outbuilding. And potentially taking the two-car garage away from it, so that there would be parking to the immediate south of that building. Which would, I think, also provide for safer access and a safer point of entry into the building. On the north side of the house, it slopes down to Cape Heart, um and frankly, I, I, I would see the development potentially of the parking. On the south side of the building.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any other questions, Commissioner Casey?
While you're still standing. Do you plan any major changes to the facade of the building and will there be signage outside the building, State Farm?
Thank you for asking, um yes, not the facade of the building, I would plan on putting a uh. I'll call it a monument type uh sign, that would probably be maybe two feet tall. And maybe five feet wide, it would have the State Farm logo on it, I would have it illuminated, you know, for nighttime. It would be part of the reason why um I, I, I'm seeking the rezoning. Because as I understand it, and I don't claim to know all the guidelines around land use, but. Any other uh zoning, I don't believe allows for signage. Um I did look into some additional so, stuff around the, the zoning. And RG twenty-eight, which is considered general residential, which does allow for medium density. In Article Five of the zoning districts, there's permitted uses, which is uh five point one, three point oh two. Uh conditional uses, which is five point one, three point oh three, and I don't know what these are conditioned upon. And then five point one, three point oh four, all of which lists the type of occupancies or buildings that are, would be permitted under. General residential, um an adult care center, that sounds like a nursing home, most of the nursing homes I see.